2020 will call their meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council. We have a whole order, roll call please.
Yep.
Here.
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 We have a forum. First item of business this morning is a discussion on the Fire and Rescue Association. We'll call on Luke Draxton. Good morning Luke.
Morning. Morning council members. Thanks for having us. Again, it's the time of year, just about in March, where we look at changing and updating our relief association per year pension service amount. And I believe you have the letter, the resolution stating what our request is from the 4950 with an increase of $200 to 5150 per year service. And historically, we come at the same time, prior to the meeting in January, the trustees have looked at our parameters of our funded ratio, what we typically try to target is 115% is kind of what our range is to request or look at a possible entry request. And so we look at our vested liabilities versus what our SBI investment assets are at the end of the year of 1231. And at the end of the year, I believe we were at about 139%. So we've got a pretty solid cushion to warrant requested increase. So the request coming forward, the council is to increase about $200 per year of service from 4950 to 5150 per year.
Thanks Luke. Any questions from the council? If not, would someone like to make a motion and bring this resolution to the council?
I'm there, Your Honor.
Thank you Tom. Thank you Krista. Roll call please. I'm sorry, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign on that motion, carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Luke. Next item up on the agenda is a discussion on the Otter Tail County recycling and we'll call on Cedar Walters. Good morning Cedar.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. So partially why I'm here is because I just kept hearing little rumors about the single sort recycling program and I just wanted to make sure that people got the information about what a success that program has really been for the city. And then just share a little extra information kind of about waste in Otter Tail County and then the most recent waste audit that we did of Fergus Falls residential garbage in December of 2019. So you should have a kind of colorful sheet from me. And so first of all, if you aren't familiar with the grant that provided the single sort carts for the city, that was in 2017 in the amount of $225,000. And that provided about 5,095 gallon carts for Fergus Falls for curbside pickup. And some of this information is probably not new, but just a little refresher. And so 400, no, sorry, 4,226 single family residences have the carts. And so if you're looking at these bar graphs on one side, it's really showing the increase in the volume, actually the weight of recycling that's been collected since that single sort program has been implemented from 1,253 tons before single sort to just this past year, 1,870 tons. And so that represents an increase of about 50% more volume by weight. And then participation is really at about 74%. So on any given week, about 74% of those residential carts are being picked up. So that's actually probably a conservative estimate because I don't know if you're like me, I don't put out my cart every single time because it might not be full or I might forget. So I actually think that number in reality is probably higher. Let's see, so some of the benefits of that are really, you know, the city is saving money on disposal costs and that's probably just going to continue. I don't see participation in this program really going down for any reason. It's very popular. So popular, I get way too many questions about when the rest of the county can have it. And so it's just really popular. And so it's really helping the city divert more waste from landfilling or waste to energy. There's a fun bit of information about what happens to recycling in Otter Tail County, but I'm not going to go into that right now. If you flip it over to kind of the overall waste stream, it's just a brief comparison of national averages to Otter Tail County. And so because we have access to a waste to energy facility in Purham, about two-thirds of the garbage overall in Otter Tail County, including from Fergus Falls, is going to waste energy, which is good because that reduces the reliance on landfilling. And then I lastly wanted to touch on the Fergus Falls waste audit. So that was the same neighborhood has been collected from, yes?
Can I ask you a question on the graphs?
Sure.
It's interesting, this is Otter Tail County, which what percentage of Otter Tail County has the recycling, like the single sort, I should say?
For, so you're referring to this here?
Yes, I'm wondering what would Fergus Falls look like as far as how much of our waste stream is recycled with the single sort?
Yep. And that, that's tricky. I don't have that number right now. So because this is kind of lumping it all together, I'm guessing Fergus Falls is definitely going to be higher because the easier you make something, the more people are going to do it for sure. And so rural residents have to, you know, drop off their recycling, they still have to separate it. And we know that those numbers are definitely lower in rural areas.
Sure.
So when you make it easy, people do it a lot more. So yeah, so this is kind of an overall estimate and it's not a perfect estimate because there's a lot of other recycling and waste diversion that happens that's not curbside or drop-off recycling. And so it's not a perfect number, but it's definitely, it's the best I could do for now.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions is just fine. And so going on to the waste audit, same neighborhood in three different time periods, 2015 was pre-single sort. And so you can see the blue bar is amount of recycling found in the garbage in 2015 was at about 25%. Of that waste stream was recyclable material, which was not being recycled. And so you can see over time, that blue line has gone way down in large part due to single sort, you know? But at the same time, the amount of organic waste in the garbage has increased and some of that might be because we're really keying in on that. This last waste audit, that was kind of an item of interest we wanted to know more about. So that's maybe part of it, but it's probably not the whole picture. And so I think this just shows that there's, there's a need for a little more education about organics and maybe composting and so that it just represents some opportunities. So 11% of the household garbage was still recycling. So we could still be capturing even more recycling, you know, not everybody's doing it every time. And then, you know, about half of that organic waste stream in the garbage was actually food that, food waste that could have been prevented. So things that were edible, but just went bad or were discarded and uneaten. So we saw a huge amount of food still in packages that had never been opened. Maybe it was a fridge clean out, freezer clean out, you know, burgers you could, we jokingly took some photos of us not, not really eating it, but kind of eating it. You know, whole packages of celery. So really there's, there's a lot of that preventable food waste in there that I'm really excited to work on more. So I think that's all I have. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question and maybe it's for Guy and for Cedar as far as the county or the city, but organic composting? Are there other communities, we have ordinances right now that don't allow for organic composting in town, is that correct?
We have an ordinance that allows for composting, but not for another provider to pick up that compost material and dispose of it somewhere else.
Okay. So a house can compost?
Yep, for sure.
Okay, alright.
Yep, and I think many of the other communities don't have a, like a ordinance or whatever about backyard composting.
Because that was changed recently.
I might be wrong, but...
It hasn't lasted a few years, right? It hasn't lasted several years.
Yeah, it lasted five or six years.
Because you couldn't, you're right, we couldn't.
Couldn't before you can now, so we should know that, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, so we'll be increasing some education about that as well, just really encouraging that as a better option than garbage.
Sure, thanks. Scott, did you have a question?
Even though you've been talking primarily about recycling, my question has to do with light bulbs. That's the thing I hear people ask me about, what do I do with my fluorescent light bulbs, my LED light bulbs, my whatever?
Sure.
That, that sort of thing, I imagine when you find it in the garbage in your waste stream audit is a problem too.
Sure.
What can you tell us about that?
Yeah, so there are definitely other parts on here that are of interest. So our household hazardous waste program does accept things like fluorescent light bulbs from residents for free. And it's, it's still amazing to me how many people don't know what that program is or what it does. So there's kind of a lack of an awareness. We're trying to push that through education more too. But so any kind of hazardous item like paint or fluorescent light bulbs, cleaners, solvents, rechargeable batteries, used oil, all of that can go there and it's free disposal for residents because we really want to see that come out of the waste stream. And businesses can also bring fluorescent bulbs for a fee. As far as we know so far, LED bulbs don't have any hazardous components to them. It's more of an electronic type bulb, but we do still take them and dispose of them properly through that program. Fluorescent light bulbs are of particular interest because there's mercury vapor in there and we really don't want that getting into the environment. Does that answer your question?
Justin?
I got two things. One would be, I don't know if it's possible, but at the ice rink, there's very few recyclable cans and they're not by normal garbage cans. So you gotta like hunt it down to find, to put it in there. And so I'd encourage, I don't know how we go about trying to get more receptacle cans there. Okay.
Woo-hoo.
So perfect. And then the second thing would be me at the household having three young kids, and I don't know if this is anybody else on the council, but I've found since the single sort...
We don't have three young kids.
You don't. Our garbage can only has usually typically one bag in it every week when the garbage comes through, but my recycling is full.
Full, every time.
And so I don't know, I mean, on the saving side, I think, at least in our household, we could not use the garbage every week, but we could use the recycling. So I don't know if we're looking into, you know, reducing the truck time on picking up garbage or if my household's unique where everybody else is...
Sounds like mine.
Mine's the same.
Yep, same here.
Yep.
And I've heard that from other people too, that, that their recycling bin is always full and their garbage, my garbage is usually only about half full.
Yeah, I have one bag.
Yeah.
I, I get asked that also frequently and then I refer them. So yeah, I think, I think it is an issue and you know, they were thinking, oh, we're going to get the bigger sized cart, bigger than the garbage cart and it's still, just seems to be not enough, which is wonderful. People are really using it, but yeah. So I just, I also advocate, you know, if you have extra, especially those cardboard boxes that take up a huge amount of room, just drop them off at the recycling center, you know? That'll save a lot of space, but it's still not a perfect solution.
Well, that's what we do, but I just, saving aside, the garbage truck, we don't need to have go it every week. If we could have them go it every weeks, then, any rate.
Might come to the point where we switch them around, have recycling every week.
Yeah.
And the garbage set for two weeks in the summer maybe.
That sounds pretty terrible.
And I'll, if I may, I'll just make the same point that I make every time we talk about this, which is that the more people recycle, the more money we save.
Yeah.
So people that are interested in keeping their property taxes as low as possible will have a vested interest in recycling as much as possible. So I say that to anyone who'll listen.
That's a very good point.
It's a utility fee as opposed to a property tax, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're, you're right. I mean, it saves a cost coming up.
Yeah, it's a, it's a cost, yeah.
Alright, with that, thank you Cedar.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
While we're talking recycling, we'll call on our finance director Bill Sommer to talk about tiered recycling rates.
Yeah, so what a lead in for that, we're back to talk to you about changing our recycling rate structure. Now, on the onset of this, the residential rate, we're looking at not changing. That's $6 a month, that's that flat fee. We're not looking at changing that. So this is for multifamily dwellings, is what we're looking at. I think we came in January and talked about this briefly and we've come back with a new structure for you. And we're trying to tie that to our rental registration tier structure as well, so that we have some consistency. You know, as we're kind of brainstorming, what's a good structure for how this would work? And again, this all kind of came about, we were talking about our mobile home parks because we have always treated them as individual residences and each individual mobile home received a separate charge for recycling. But they are recycling in a large 300 gallon tote, I guess you'd say, the big round ones. So in a congregate setting of that. So that's kind of what brought that up and it was certainly brought to our attention by those owners. And then we looked at other cities and how they were doing that. And then we look at large apartment buildings that were paying not much more than a single family residence. So to me, that felt off as well. So that's why we, we tried to build this system and we're looking at, if you're an apartment unit of two to four units, it would be 758. That would be the same rate as a commercial customer then. If you, you know, have a business downtown or somewhere, they're, they're paying 758 for that rate. And then if you jump to five to nine units, 15, 16, 10 to 20 unit building, 30, 32. And then if it's 21 units plus, then we're up to 45, 48. So certainly that's going to be an increase for those really large buildings. But I think when we look at that kind of, it seems to make more sense, look at how many residences are within that building. And of course with that, we do want to promote that they really do use recycling in all these large buildings as well too, as, as we just came up that presentation. Now, there are instances where we have multi-unit buildings, but they're kind of stacked next to each other. And we have the instances where they each have their own utility service. So those are receiving a separate residential charge. We're not looking at changing that. There's not a perfect science here when we look at implementing this. It's kind of a big deal to try and get, it's, it's so hard to perfectly standardize, but it seems to make sense if you have a separate water service charge, stormwater, all that, we're going to keep that. Those owners of those buildings have that in those residents' names as well. So they're treated more like a single family residence. Again, those ones that are kind of set next to each other have their own separate entrances to each, kind of a townhome kind of style. As far as implementation, if, if you approve of this, we probably wouldn't look at doing this until April. We're coming up on March. It is kind of a big deal to implement this, so giving us a couple months to get this in place would be our goal. So Sandy, did I miss anything with that that you can think of? Sandy really worked hard on this and came up with a, with this good structure and I, it seems to make some sense to me, so what do you guys think?
So it's approximately $3 per uni, roughly $3, give or take $3 a unit as opposed to six for a single family or for a...
Yeah, it, you know...
On the high end is $3, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a big change, but it seems also, I think it seems a little low as, you know, I mean, there's, there's still a unit that's using the recycling, just like a single family or a rental unit or anyone else. So I, I would support it.
And from our cost side, you know, it is efficient when you have a large building and we're making one stop at that building, so we don't have, you know, a multiplier of those costs into that. So that's why you could justify, and it's a defendable rate, that yeah, they're probably paying less per unit. But again, we don't, we're not making individual stops for 20 in this building, so just trying to make it equitable, so.
Sure. Anyone have any other, Anthony?
Yeah, I think it's a lot better function because obviously we've kind of basically ended up revenue neutral.
Even, thank you for pointing that out. Even a little bit to the good on this one, we may gain a little in our estimates, which is fine because when we look a couple years out with our costs going up on handling recyclables, we would look at actually start tipping where we'd start losing some money on our recycling portion of the refuse business. So that's where I'm comfortable too, even if we gain a little bit, you know, if it's a couple thousand dollars out of the whole refuse fund. But again, those are just estimates too.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
I would want, just one last comment, Your Honor. I would say that obviously council member Arneson could probably do with a 300 gallon recyclable bin to sit in his yard.
I'm sure he would love that.
I would charge him 45 bucks for it, so.
I could try and fill it, I could take all the neighbors recycling.
It's a fee.
Scott, did you have a comment?
I'll offer the motion and my comment would be, I believe this is a more fair approach and just for that reason, I think it's something that we should support.
Thank you.
We have a motion due in a second.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you Justin, any other comments? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign on that motion, carries. Thank you Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks Bill, and thanks Sandy.
Yeah?
She really worked on it, so.
Next up on the agenda is looking at our lifeguard agreement with YMCA and I'll call on Guy Taylor, Public Improvement Director. Good morning Guy.
One of your honor, councilman members. This is just a renewal of a contract that we've had in place with YMCA for lifeguard services out at Pebble Beach. The service agreement is basically the same. They're not asking for an increase in the amount that we pay them for that service, so just looking to get your approval for that contract for the 2020 season.
All of it.
Justin?
All of it, Your Honor.
Thank you sir. And everything, times are the same, services provided.
Yep, 70 days starting, I think, June 13th until 70 days are up, weather permitting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion to bring this to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign on that motion, carries. Thank you Guy. Our next item on the agenda is trunk highway 210 drainage issue west of Interstate I-94. We'll call on, oh, good morning Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, Your Honor and council members. Memo before you is in regards to drainage issue that was discovered this fall here by MinDOT. It's generally located along Highway 210. I have a map up here if you'd like, like to turn to the north right here. Just want to show a brief illustration what we have. This is a modified version of the map that MinDOT has provided. Well, I haven't noted on what we're looking at, rate to the east of this map here is interchange of I-94. If you look to the left of the map, that's male murky. So in between this particular area here, there's a cattle pass tunnel, four by six that is existing beneath trunk highway 210. This fall, it was discovered on the outlet side, which is on the south side, the lower level of the page, there's a severe erosion issue from this. MinDOT determined that the erosion is so severe that they're proposing to install a new 42 inch storm sewer pipe, which is illustrated in, in the orange, to be a trenchless. This is going to be a jacked pipe, it's not going to be close to traffic, but it's a little bit more expensive. But they proposed to have this done on emergency repair. They believe the erosion is so, so, so severe on the east side, they would like to get this taken care of. Because of this, they're planning on jacking this pipe, installing a new 72 inch manhole in there right away. And they also propose to abandon the cattle pass in place and do some minor ditch grading. I just want to note, there's no immediate danger to the traveling public. MinDOT's just proposed an emergency repair, just to get this done prior to spring thaw to help with the aid with the construction. During this investigation, MinDOT also discovered that the city's flow was contributing to this particular area in exceedance from permitted, from permitted back many, many decades ago. We're still trying to investigate this. We don't have any solutions right now. A lot of these flows that come directly to this area originate in the Bigwood Event Center. We have a stormwater pond there. So at this time, I'm working with interstate engineering that's done a lot of hydraulic works to number one, validate what MinDOT's indicating and then see if we can find a feasible solution. Once I have more updates, I'll present it, but I just wanted to let you know what MinDOT's up in case you get any questions on this. They're planning on doing this work here in March, so it's come on pretty quite rapidly, so. Any questions?
Thank you Brian. Any questions from the council? Alright, thanks for that update.
Sure.
And Brian's up again on item number six, Public Improvement 9347, which is the runway lights out at the airport.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Runway 1331, which is our primary airport runway, this is a lighting replacement project that we're, that consists of replacing and upgrading the runway threshold lights, runway and identifier lights and high intensity runway lights. Along with that, we're proposing to replace the entire circuitry that surrounds the entire runway and it goes back to our electrical vaults. Over the past few years and even decades now, the airport has experienced numerous lighting system failures that require emergency repairs and calls the local electricians. I know based on talking with local electrician, some of these repairs can take quite some time to trace and find. The parks are also so old, the particular vaults that are isolated next to each light fixture are in corroded and severe repair as well. They're no longer watertight, so water intrusion has also become a significant problem over time. So much during winter seasons, they're filled with water. If there's any repairs, they're almost impossible to repair because of the large erosion formations. Because of this, similar past projects, we submitted initiated a grant request for the design and bidding. Once we go through all this process, with the final grant application submission is due on May 18th of this year, so it's coming up rapidly, pretty fast. The past year, the FAA has revamped their grant application process and that's actually May 18th is, is quite more expedited than years past. Based on discussions with the FAA, we have a preliminary estimated total project cost of about $725,000 for this project. We are going to be requesting 652,500, which is 90% of federal discretionary funds. The remaining 72,500, which is 10% of the total projected estimated cost, is proposed to be split between the city and state. I want to note, the FAA discretionary funds are unallocated appropriation funds currently reserved for airside needs. This is not our entitlement dollars, this is discretionary funds. Based on discussions with the FAA, they do have discretionary funds, however, these are prioritized. There's no guarantee of these funds, however, the FAA's indicate they would like us in the, the list. It could be a three, four year waiting list, but I think it's pertinent that we, we become part of this list. So at this time, I'm requesting initiate Public Improvement 9347, the runway, runway 1331 lighting replacement project, authorization to submit the grant initiation request for federal assistance and accept SEH's professional services proposal for design in an amount of $63,200. And at that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, thank you Brian. Someone like to make the motion?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
You got a question for Brian?
Second.
Tom? Thank you Brian, go ahead Tom.
Just out of curiosity, Brian, do you know, are they transitioning to LED lighting?
Yes.
Where they save savings over the long term?
Yes, very good question. Yeah, these would be proposed to be new LED fixtures. However, with these new LED fixtures, there's actually have to be enhancements as far as heat signatures to help thaw these bulbs out. This is a common thing with LEDs, but they're, they, yes, we're looking to have LED fixtures to basically reduce overall operation cost for lighting.
So even with the added heating, it would still save savings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's interesting.
Thank you. Any other questions? Scott?
Is the $63,200 for the professional services included in the $725,000 project cost or is that in addition to it?
That in the projected, no, that's included in the overall project cost. And of that amount, our local share projected to be about 5% of that 63.
Sure, 5% of the total project actually.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I was a little concerned about the cost of the design at 63, whether it was our total cost or not. Either way, it just seems like an awful lot of money for the design side of it. There's 70 fixtures or so in this thing, it's like a thousand dollars per fixture and it's something that, you know, you design one of them, you do it 70 times, it seems like a, kind of a racket these guys have got going to plan this thing out. So it just sounded a little expensive. I know that $700,000, they're expensive fixtures, I'm sure that's true. Even our downtown light fixtures are $8,000 a piece, those decorative ones. So that's maybe not so surprising to me, but the design side of it seemed a little high.
If I may, I'd just like to note too, with the FAA providing 90% of funds, you're pretty much playing, for lack of better terms, by their rules. There's a lot of other background research that's been done. I know SEH has been working on this for the past year, having those negotiations with the FAA and trying to identify these funding sources. The FAA also requires a substantial amount of behind the scenes work, including the Environmental Policy Act determinations, construction safety plan, airspace analysis and a lot of other design engineering reports that are not really common with some of our local projects. It's just a constraint that the FAA requires.
Thanks, Brian. Any other questions or comments? There's a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Last, what, I start, number seven on the agenda is Public Improvement 5331. That is the 2020 Mill and Overlay Project.
Thank you. The memo before you is in regards to our annual mill and overlay projects and seal codes. We've been identifying local street candidates that will receive a Batumis overlay and seal code application. These are two street applications, our preventive maintenance strategies that we contract, like I mentioned, on an annual basis throughout the city. With the mill and overlay projects, I want to note that pedestrian ramps will be improved to meet ADA standards in these neighborhoods that receive it. So at this time, we levy approximately $244,800 for mill and overlays at this current 2020 budget levy and $129,600 for seal code applications. These budgetary amounts not only include the construction costs, but total project costs such as staff time, in-house engineering to do this work. Therefore, at this time, I'm requesting initiate Public Improvement 5331, the 2020 Mill and Overlay Improvement Project. I'm also requesting order of project plans and specifications for 5331. Third, I'm initiate Public Improvement 5332, the 2020 Seal Code Improvement Project. And the fourth item is also request of project plans and specifications for Public Improvement 5332.
Thank you, Brian. And I would just say, I'll leave the professional work to the engineers, but I would put a plug in for Lake Alice on the east side of the lake. We had a meeting. We just talked to the neighborhood there. So I'll leave the professional work up to you and your staff, but I would put a plug in for Lake Alice.
Duly noted.
Would someone like to make a motion? Do we bring this to the council?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Justin, any other questions or any other plugs?
I think we should just note that this is an increase of $62,000 over last year's spending.
We've increased the last, yeah, each of the last two years now. This is the third year, third year that we're increasing the funding by 20% on our road.
Yes. It's a very good point and I duly appreciate it because it makes these projects go farther.
Sure. Thank you. We have a motion to bring this to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, the motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We have one more additional item on the agenda this morning, and that is a public nuisance ordinance. We'll call on City Attorney Andy Brumford.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor members. Good morning. As you all know, we've been working through our codification of ordinances and updating ordinances, and this is just another one of those. So the action I'm looking for this morning is just a motion directing the city attorney to update the public nuisance ordinance. You guys will have that in your packets that go out on Thursday and it could be considered for first reading introduction at Monday night's meeting. So you'll have the proposed language in front of you on Thursday and then it could be ready for action on Monday if somebody's comfortable introducing it at that time. So again, we need a motion directing the city attorney to draft those updates and then you'll see it in your packet.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Caroline. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Let's see, Monday, March 2nd, city council meeting. March 3rd, Tuesday. I hope everyone got a chance to caucus last night and then we'll vote on the presidential primary on Tuesday, March 3rd from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Lynn's been working hard to make sure everything's gonna run super smooth, right Lynn?
Yes.
Yes.
No snowstorm.
No snowstorm. And then March 11th is the next committee, the whole meeting. Anyone have anything else to bring before the council?
Just say thank you to Lynn for the great work that she does with our elections.
There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes and thank you for all that work. We're adjourned.